So, good evening. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, the planning board meeting of January 4th, 2024. I'll read the roll. John, myself, present. Rebecca is, she might be coming later or not. But right now, she's absent. Phil?
Present.
Neil?
Present.
Mike?
Here.
Mark? Not here. Susan?
Present.
All the members. Zach, not here. Michael Bouchard?
Present.
And Peter Julia. Okay, so, Michael, I will see you as a voting member this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And we'll begin with the review of minutes from December 21st. Everyone have a copy? We have to approve the minutes as written.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
And Neil, okay. Right, the minutes are approved. Alright, are there any public comments not related to the business on the agenda this evening? Which means basically not related to the zoning amendments? Nope. Okay. Communications received, Joseph?
We did receive an email from one of the attendees at the public hearing last time, who asked if the board would consider reversing the order of discussing the amendments at this public hearing. And that was, I don't recall the name, but that was one of the individuals who attended the previous public hearing.
Okay.
Sent that correspondence over email.
Okay. I consider that.
Should be fast either way.
Alright, reports of committees, HOP Grant Housing Committee. So, I'll say this, say a few words there, so we can keep moving along. Much of the work we've been doing on the HOP Grant Housing Committee has been leading towards what we'll be discussing here this evening, these zoning amendments and/or proposed zoning amendments. And so we've been chugging along. We did have a little bit of a break the last few weeks, but we'll be meeting again next Tuesday. And looking forward, with the zoning amendments kind of squared away for this season, you know, after up or down votes this evening, we'll be looking at a couple of other amendments that we might be thinking about for 2025, and also the open space residential or regulations, which we'll talk about later this evening anyhow. And, yeah, I think I'll keep it nice and short, sweet, for now. Okay. New business. So, we have our second public hearing for the 2024 proposed zoning amendments this evening. And just to say a few words about those. As I just mentioned, a lot of this is coming out of the work that the Housing Committee has been doing, and it's myself, Sue, Mike, and several other members of the community who have been involved in this process, working tirelessly for the past year to get us where we are. And we do still have a little bit of time left to do some more work this spring. And our main goal has been to think about what our housing needs are and how we can make some regulatory changes, many of which we'll be discussing this evening, to facilitate the development of more housing. So, if you have been at any of our community meetings, I'll say this quickly. There are a few things that we were talking about that we have not included in the zoning amendments for this year, because they either need more study, or it's just a lot for one year. And so we were talking about a Tenny Mountain overlay, which is still on the docket, but not for this year. Potentially an inclusionary zoning ordinance, which we'll also be thinking about potentially for next year. Otherwise, tonight, so we'll be looking at the zoning ordinance, any amendments to it. The zoning ordinance being the legally binding document that regulates land use and development in Plymouth. And so we look forward to hearing everyone's input and comments. And so a little bit of how this go, I'll open a public hearing for the duration of most of the rest of our meeting. And we'll go through each amendment one at a time. And so save your comments for each amendment to that time, just to keep everything organized. And so for the planning board, well, at the end of our discussion of each amendment, I think we should decide whether or not to move that amendment forward, proposed amendment forward, to a vote at town meeting. And just as a reminder to everyone in the room, please do come and vote, and it's the Tuesday before the in-person town meeting. Which I know, you have to keep track of that sometimes, like which happens which evening, or which day. And as we're moving through this, we might also just want to mention, it probably is easiest and best for the wording of the process. Does anybody, so we did have a request come from an email, I guess Joseph said, right, to potentially do these in reverse order this time around. Do we, anyone have a strong feeling about that? Should we do?
I like the concept, only because, yeah, if people are here waiting for the end, and they waited last time.
Yeah.
We should afford them that courtesy.
We ended up with one person here last time, so I don't think it gave everybody a fair shot. So I think, I'm for it.
There may have been people who left early, who wanted to comment on this one.
Good enough. Yeah. I'm, I'm good with that. So we'll start with number eight, and countdown to number one. Okay, so for each of these, I'll just read the text from the public hearing notice, which will likely be similar to the text that we see in the actual article, assuming we agree to send it to town meeting. So, number eight, which pertains to Article 3 of the Ordinance Zones, Maps and Regulations. Amend Article 3, the zoning map, and Article 14 to create a Fairgrounds Road residential overlay district, which would preserve the underlying zoning, while allowing property owners the option of using the overlay district standards as an alternative, which mirrors the dimensional requirements of the single-family residential zone, and allow single-family detached, single-family attached, two-family, and accessory dwelling units as permitted uses. This would overlay portions of the ag and highway commercial districts, roughly covering land along both sides of Fairgrounds Road, stretching west from Main Street to the old Fairgrounds site, and as far north as the Plymouth Town Boundary. So, yeah, so the goal here is, you know, after public input and lots of community involvement this year, as well as seeing this as a target in, potentially for more housing in the 2018, 2018, 2018 master plan, right? To make sure I get the date right. 2018 master plan. That, there's been inconsistent, you know, looking towards this region of town as potential, as having the potential for more housing, and due to availability of infrastructure, like water and sewer, and ground and space, and already seeing quite a bit of residential development there anyway. And so, following this, you would either follow the current zoning, which for most of this district is the ag, some of it is highway commercial, or opting into the overlay, which means you get to follow the dimensional requirements, which are smaller of the single-family residential, and allow you to do, following those dimensional requirements, residential uses. So in other words, you couldn't create a farm on the, on a plot of land the size of a single-family residential house in the, in the single-family residential zone. But you could create a house there, following that. So you can't mix and match regulations, basically. Oh, and I should open the public hearing, which I haven't done yet. So we're at 6:43, and I will open the public hearing. Before any members of the public speak, do any members of the planning board have any preliminary comments about this amendment? Would any members of the public like to speak to this? Yes, if you'd like to speak, please come up to the podium, identify yourself, and ask your question or make your comment.
My name is John Randlett, Plymouth resident. I spent seven years on the planning board and seven years as selectman. And a lot of this stuff, you know, we had a lot of things we discussed, but some of these items were not on that list. And looking at this particular item, it's going from Main Street to the old Fairgrounds. Why not all of Fairgrounds Road? Why not continue it past the Fairgrounds?
We did have some discussion of, you know, what those boundaries would be, and if they would go farther. My own recollection of the discussions was, at this point at least, it would be, a lot of people in, that were part of these discussions and the community, decided to kind of target it in a bit more of a tight area. And this is also the area of Fairgrounds that already has a bit more of a dense residential character than some of the further areas of Fairgrounds. So we figured it was a bit more in keeping with that portion of Fairgrounds. I mean, there's also farms and stuff there as well, and other uses. But it seemed that this type of residential development was a bit more in keeping with that end of Fairgrounds. And in theory, it could be expanded further than that, but at this point, we decided to kind of stick with that.
Okay. And, and that would help with the density development of the Fairgrounds itself?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Did it have something to do with the water and sewer as well?
I think water and sewer runs all along.
Water and sewer goes about to the Fairgrounds.
It does end at the Fairgrounds?
And I think that was the original intention, was to keep it so that it would be on public.
Okay.
It goes as far as the chainsaw shop.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I thought it was supposed to go down that far.
Well, the Methodist Church is on West Water and Sewer, and right across from the chainsaw shop.
Yeah. No, so part of it was about the water and sewer, but we did pull it back a little further than that. And I think it was mostly about character of like, those areas, and the Fairgrounds seemed like a good breaking point in that regard. With, given what comes after that. Any other comments?
Hi, my name's Katie Battleak. I'm a Plymouth resident, and I actually live in the Fairgrounds residential overlay district. I appreciate that the plan right now is for this specific district, as opposed to going all the way out Fairgrounds. I mean, if this works, great, but why not start with, you know, a more contained version of these new regulations? And if they work fine, then, you know, we could expand them. But if there's kinks in the plan, or something doesn't work out, then we don't have as much land that is under the, under new regulations. Just for clarification, in terms of water sewer, I live on Brookside Drive, and the homes on Brookside do not have sewer, we have septic, but we certainly have water service from the town. So, that's all I have to add.
It's also worth noting, this is an aside, which I didn't mention in the beginning. By going with an overlay rather than like rezoning the portion of town, it allows us to maintain current uses, and not, to not take away any current.
The ag, district, what am I saying? The regulations, then you would be using what?
In terms of dimensions, you would be using single-family residential.
Right, and there was discussion about single-family residential being no longer the verbiage being permitted, rather than a special exception?
I think it was specific to one of the uses within single-family residential.
There was, there was a lot that was changed underneath that.
Yeah.
Rewatching it last night, so I was wondering if that would be, I mean, obviously residential area, I mean, you would be following that in the fraud, if you decide to go that route?
You'd be, you'd be following their dimensions.
Right, which are permitted, but I thought there was discussion about, I thought there was a discussion about special exceptions, which would give neighbors a chance to weigh in on, you know, if somebody wanted to add stuff to their property.
There, there was a discussion of special exception.
Accessory dwelling units.
For accessory dwelling units. And I believe in this case, accessory dwelling units would be allowed by right for single-family houses. Is that correct, Joseph?
Yeah, so in the single-family residential zone, the board decided to make that change to have accessory dwelling units be by special exception. But in the, as the Fairgrounds residential overlay is proposed, it has them as, by, as a permitted use.
Permitted use, so you don't have to go to the special exception process.
But that's what they're currently, in the ag zone, they're permitted.
Right.
So, so it wouldn't be changing that. It's, the overlay zone simply gives another option to use the different dimensional requirements, but like, you could already have an accessory dwelling unit in the ag zone without a special exception.
Right, so hypothetically, someone buys the property next to me, and wants to change, put accessory dwelling on it. And that's permitted, and they don't need a special exception, and they don't need any of that. They can just go ahead and do it.
And that's permitted regardless of the overlay.
Change that.
But I thought the, I thought you guys said the fraud, the overlay would go back to single-family resident, residential, like regulations?
For the, for dimensional requirements,
Only.
it follows single-family residential. For uses, it's pretty close to single-family residential, but it's not identical. Because it, what's different is accessory dwelling unit is by right, and the other difference is, single-family attached is allowed, which it would not be allowed in the single-family residential neighborhood.
Alright, I would like, I mean, I would like to see, then, I, you know, watching it last night, it wasn't clear. I was, you know, you know, my wife and I were, were watching, like, oh, good, so they made that change. So then that means, in our zone, if somebody wants to use that instead of the ag regulations, then they'll have to go back and use the new, you know, special exception. Alright, but you're saying that's not true. So this is a little bit more confusing than, you know, for everyone to vote on at this point.
Yeah, it's not exactly the same as this single family, even if it's the dimensional requirement, it's the same, right?
It seems like the verbiage, though, it seems pretty close. That's my.
If you follow the overlay, you're very, very close to the single-family residential. You are identical in dimensional requirements, and you are almost, but not quite, identical in uses.
Good, so let's add the special exception part to that, too. So neighbors can have a say, and, you know, you know, at least voice their concern to somebody that just bought the property next to them and wants to, you know, add different things to their property.
I, I, I will, we can, we can discuss that and consider that. I will also say that, being the second hearing at this point, it's a very tight timeline to make any substantive changes, which would have to be, which would be subject to another public hearing, and there's certain deadlines we have to meet. So, it would be tough to make that change this evening. But I'll leave it up to the board to discuss.
What's up?
So I'll leave that up to the board to discuss.
I mean, it is already, like you said, pretty dense, densely populated in this area already, especially in my end, where we live. And it would be, it would be nice for those people who are not already in that area, where all the new construction's going on, you know, to have.
Has the area requirements in the fraud zone. So, the only time that would come into play is if somebody was doing a new development, and they wanted to use the single-family residential lot sizes in that area. Right now, they, or under the proposed, if everything that we're proposing goes through, they would not need a special exception for an accessory dwelling unit, or a two-family dwelling, as those are currently permit, proposed to be permitted in the fraud. Whereas in the single-family residential, they would require a special exception.
Because it's existing, right?
No, no. Because the, if you look on page 17, those are, those are permitted uses within the fraud. There's a list of five uses on the bottom of page 17.
Yep.
Those are outright permitted. And if you look at page 2, you can kind of see that, you know, that's the list of permitted uses in the ag zone. Currently, everything's permitted in the ag zone.
What page is the, the discussion that you guys, sorry to interrupt you, Phil. What pages, what you guys talked about at the first public hearing with the residential, single-family residential?
Uses?
Yeah, it was uses, but it was, it was permitted, and then you changed it, you all changed it to.
So, that's the Second Amendment, I believe, that we have proposed, which is the use table. And we were thinking about doing accessory dwelling units permitted everywhere, and we changed that to requiring a special exception in the single-family residential.
To go to the zoning board rather than the planning board. I mean, that's in response to David Kent's.
Request by the zoning board chair.
Yeah, right. So David, yeah, he was speaking about that.
As a citizen.
You would like that same criteria?
I would like, yeah, I would, I mean, if we're, if you're going in, I don't know, maybe it's a little bit more simple in my mind. If you're going by those uses, permitted uses, and it was changed to, you know, all of them were changed to, I think, you know, in the single-family residential area, to use special exception, because there was that discussion, then that should, I guess in my mind, transfer over to the overlay.
In your mind, it'd be easier, instead of doing a fraud overlay, just to change the whole thing to single-family residential, make the uses and, and.
Hey, I'm not looking to stop the process.
No, I'm just saying, like, I mean, in theory, that's kind of what you're looking for.
I mean, I like the choice.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not trying to like, say, you know, completely, let's just keep it the way it is, because I don't think that's right. You know, I like the theory, I just think it should be uniform across the board, instead of, you know.
I'm not sure that would be a substantial, a substantial change, that we can't make that minor. I mean, we are permitting duplexes, we are permitting a lot more, but they have to go through, if they're creating lots, they're going through the subdivision process, so the neighbors get notified. In this case, if there's already a house, and all of a sudden, he's adding a unit there, there's no process at all, he just gets it. And Brian, I think, is saying, we need some sort of process, the neighbors know about.
That's what, you know, I would like to see.
I, I think that would be, in my reading, a substantive change. I don't know, Joseph, you have a thought about that? I mean, requiring a special exception, it seems more like than just a clerical sort of issue.
On existing homes.
I mean, to change an amendment, that seems like more than a clerical issue. It seems like a substantive change that we'd have to rehear to put to a vote. That's the kind of practicalities of what this means in terms of timeline. And.
But Neil, oh, the public hearings are set back far enough to allow for that time, if that's.
So, so the way our public hearings are arranged, our first one allowed quite a big timeframe to make changes to the amendments. Our second hearing, Joseph, you can tell me what the, clarify the timeline. Do we need to get like, the language, we would have to renotice that really fast.
I believe the final date for getting zoning amendment language to the town clerk is the 5th of February. I could be mistaken, but I'm pulling up the calendar now.
If we made this change tonight, I'm not sure we'd have sufficient time to notice it for our next meeting, two weeks from now.
Correct, so the last day to hold per the zoning amendment calendar, the last day to hold hearing on proposed zoning amendments is February the 5th. And then the last day to place them on file with the town clerk is, is February the 6th. And then the last day to post and publish notice for the 5th would be the 25th, so it's 10 days. But there would need to be some time in, you know, before that, to get it to the newspaper and things. But those are, those are the dates that are on the calendar.
Next meeting will be on the, the 1st.
Can I, oh, go, go.
We do have meetings on the 18th and the 1st.
The 18th, I'm not sure we could actually notice in time for.
What's the meeting after that one, the after the 18th?
The 1st.
So we could do it.
Yeah.
In theory. Can I, can I ask, for this point, clarification? I understand the desire for public notification and having a public hearing where you can express your responses to proposed changes from your neighbors, which obviously makes sense. At the same time, I also understand that, you know, there are certain things that just are handled by permitting, the permitting process, in terms of quite a lot of residential construction. And it doesn't ever go through the planning board. And what, do you have a concern specifically about the ADUs that you really feel they need to go through that process?
Well, honestly, it was just the, you know, when I came, when I came to sit down, I checked to see if anything was, you know, that was changed from the first public hearing, and it wasn't. And that's, that's why I came up, because, you know, it may have been changed in the, you know, earlier amendments, but, you know, when it says, you know, permitted use, I go back to that conversation at the first public hearing. And, you know, I guess my confusion may be the fact that, you know, it's closely related, but it's not exactly. And I think it should, if it's, if you're going to choose one or the other with whatever, you know, it should kind of be the same.
I mean, we did choose.
Personally, I like the fact that, you know, neighbors can have a, you know, discussion with their neighbor about, you know, accessory dwellings added to property.
No, and I respect that, I just, there has to be a point where you draw the line, which is, which is as a permitting process, and where you need a public hearing. And this is one of those places where it often goes one way or the other. And I would say that.
I was just gonna say that, you know, there was the, if the, under the advisement of the consultant, who's kind of working on the, the HOP Grant, we had, you know, Amendment 2, one of the changes in Amendment 2 is to make it easier for accessory dwelling units in all zones. And I think the discussion that came up in the last hearing was that, you know, there was a request that, at least in the single-family residential, there should be some level of review, at least comment by neighbors. But, you know, when I, when I think about what happens in a special exception case, you know, if the applicant can demonstrate that they meet pretty, you know, uniform criteria, they have to get the special exception, whether the neighbors like it or not. Like, special exception really doesn't provide that much opportunity for neighborhood feedback.
Sure.
You know, that's, that's on, on one hand, on the other, it's not, it's not a variance where they have to prove hardship. It's, it's basically, can you tick these boxes, and if you do, you get it.
Right. I guess this is where the planning board was coming from. We were getting a whole lot of these applications this past year, and most of them were just like, we're just looking at the criteria and saying, check, 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 which is very similar to what a, you would do for a building permit. And yes, we heard from a Butters, and we heard a couple of feedback, which obviously is helpful and important, and builds trust and, and all of that. But at, at the end of the meeting, it, it felt rather routine for us. And we, under the advisement of the housing consultant, decided to kind of follow suit with some other towns are doing as well, which is kind of move it more into a basic permitting process. But then we got some pushback, and we decided to go for the special exception in the single-family residential. So anyways, that's kind of the evolution of what happened. Mike?
So I would say we got pushback, because the lots are small in the single-family residential. residential zone.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden now, Brian's like, what's the difference? We're talking about small lots again.
Mm-hmm.
In the ag zone, in the overlay. So, to me, it might be a wor- worth a phone call to the town attorney, is this a substantial, substantial change? Or can we call it good and just make that change? Because I think it makes one hundred percent, uh, sense to do it. Or we do another meeting and make that change. If this board votes and decides to, um, listen to Brian, because I think there's a lot more people out there that didn't understand it, because I didn't even understand that wasn't being carried over.
Can, can I propose a?
Yeah.
A, a potential solution to this that would, I think, would alleviate Brian's, address Brian's concern, is where, on page seventeen, where we have use regulations, where it says the following use shall be permitted in the fraud, we can delete all five those, all five of those, and say, um, uses for, in the fraud shall be in alignment with uses in the single-family residential zone. And I think that that would, I think that that could be a solution. Because, I mean, when the single-family residential zoning changes, because it's different now, and we're proposing a change for two, so whatever is currently in place for the single-family residential would be in place for the fraud.
I have two issues there. One is, it was ju- just as much as the, as even more so than, um, changing, adding a special exception, certainly be a substantive change.
Yeah.
And still require rehearing. And we heard a lot of feedback from people who really liked single-family attached, um, as a, as a building type.
Oh, and that's not allowed.
And that's not allowed in the single-family residential, so there are other changes as well.
Yeah, that's true.
And we did, we did get a lot of feedback from people who really wanted to see more of that.
Yeah.
And, so I...
That's what I mean.
Yeah. Other thoughts?
That is a change that I had considered.
I'd say, listen, see what else Brian has to say, listen to the rest of the public and go from there.
I think, I'm, I mean, I made my main points and my thoughts and ultimately a request that it be uniform across the board, if we're gonna use that verbiage, so, um, I don't know. I guess that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Before we discuss that issue further, are there any other public comments? And before we discuss the issue further, so Joseph, if you can speak to the timeline of a potential renotice for a public hearing, and then getting the language finalized and in a very short timeframe to send to the town clerk, um, how does that look in terms of feasibility?
Yes, so the...
So, we know that, whether that even happens, discussion.
Yep, yep, so the, I mean, the next board meeting, like you said, is on February first, if I'm not mistaken, so that is before the date, um, we would need to make sure that, you know, the, the language that we're gonna get to the clerk is ready to get to the clerk in, in, you know, ideally a little before that, February sixth, so we can get it to the attorney. So, I mean, it's, we, we certainly wouldn't have, we've already passed the, the time to notice for the eighteenth of January, but, uh, February first, I, I would imagine we could likely accommodate, I would have to check with the mailing company, uh, just to confirm, but they've typically been about a week out, so, um, and similar with the Record Enterprise, so, um, we'd want to call it like eighteen days or so that out, that we would need to start getting those notices out, um, for a public hearing, if we were gonna do it in February, so...
Okay. Thank you.
And you still have the Daily Sun as an option, if you can't get it into the Record Enterprise? Is that still...
Uh, I'm not aware of, uh, you know, I, I'm sure we could reach out to the Daily Sun.
Laconia Sun?
We haven't...
Laconia.
Yeah, we haven't used them, um, in, in some time, but I, I'm sure we could reach out if...
They're daily.
They are daily.
Broad readership in this area.
Yeah, it's, you know, we've, the paper we've used for the other hearings has been the Record Enterprise, but if we, you know, I think if we can get it ready, you know, at least, you know, eighteen days prior to the, the hearing, that should be fine, to still get it in the Enterprise anyway, which is where we're still at now.
And I have a question for Joseph. Um, we did get the letters to everybody in the zone, correct?
Yep, that's correct, so...
So, they had it, and they were noticed that there was a meeting tonight?
Yep, that's correct. So, the, um, the, uh, the letters, there were a set of letters that went to the, um, multifamily residential, the civic and the highway commercial zones, which, um, were due to the size of those zoning districts, and then, as the housing committee discussed, there were also, uh, and requested, there were also letters sent to the folks in the boundaries of the Fairgrounds overlay district for this meeting, um, advising them of the hearing and the amendments.
It's a good thing we didn't vote to enlarge it then.
John, can I ask Brian? Brian, is that how you knew about this meeting, from that letter you received?
Absolutely.
Otherwise, you would have known nothing.
Correct. And I know for the town, I'm sorry, I've got a lot of time.
And I know I got a call from John Rinlet, who got the letter and had no clue. So, everybody else has been noticed. I'm just surprised there, anybody else that got the letter? You get the letter?
I'm not a town resident.
So...
Are you talking about this letter that...
Yes, you got a letter, you...
I got a letter, but there are two other people that didn't get a letter. Not at all.
So, not everyb- i- i- in the residential overlay, or in the Fairgrounds Road overlay, or just in general in the town?
It was on Page Street.
Okay, on Page Street, okay.
We've only got two bounce backs, and one was, uh, so far, and it doesn't, not to say that another bounce back couldn't come at some point, but so far, we've got, uh, two, or, or I think three bounce backs. One was, um, one was underlying land for a condominium association. One was, that, that didn't have a, a proper address in the tax system. Uh, one was brought back as not able to be delivered, um, and that was on Crescent Street. And then there was one other that was in the name of, um, in the name of, I think, a business entity that no longer was in operation. So, we just pulled the, the tax addresses, I think there were a total of, um, three hundred and thirty-three, so if, I certainly would, um, you know, apologies if there were some that, that didn't get out quite right. We just went by what was in the tax records off of the, you know, the, you know, digitized tax maps, um, for the, the proposed area. All in all, it was three hundred and thirty letters.
So, can I ask Neil a question?
Yes.
Neil, um, you're in, you're living in that area.
I live out in the ag zone.
Well, just past it. Have you heard any feedback on it at all?
Very little.
I've heard some generally supportive feedback from people, I don't wanna name any names, but I've heard some generally supportive.
I haven't heard anything negative.
Tom McLaughlin at the zoning board meeting also observed that he got a letter, but he, and he didn't know if he was gonna be able to make it tonight, uh, but I believe he, like, he didn't end up being able to.
So, how do we all feel about the moving forward or making this amendment to the amendment, or, you know, it's not, not everyone has been speaking up?
Well, I, I think for simplicity's sakes, for the public to understand, right, ideally it would mirror. Ideally, because I think if you're at home for some reason, and you're looking at these, and you're like, well, I live in this overlay district, I know I have ag options, and I know I have single-family options, so, if, you know, I just think, I think ideally, that would be the case. I do think, though, based on what's on page two, if it was to mirror that, we would not, not only need, need to change accessory dwelling unit on page seventeen to special exception, we'd have to change the two-family dwelling to special exception, because that's what single-family is, correct? And we'd have to add, really, in the single-family residential, a special exception for the single-family dwelling attached not exceeding four units. If it was, if it was gonna fully mirror, because that's what's on page seventeen.
So, and we're not, so we're not fully mirroring, and we were...
Right, no, I know, but I'm saying...
And we were hoping to be a little bit more permissive in the overlay than we are in the single-family residential.
Yep.
Which, which is part of why we didn't carry over the special exception for the ADU there.
No, I did, I'm just...
But if, if we wanna go that way, we can, um, and by the way, Joseph, the, the D in, what, single-family dw- F and D, number four, should probably be capitalized to mirror the others. And that is not a substantive change.
No, it's not.
Oh, is this in the text of the amendment itself?
Yes.
Page seventeen, number four.
Page seventeen, number four, single-family dwelling attached.
Capital D.
Capital, F and capital D.
Good point, good point.
And probably A as well, the detached is capitalized, so it's attached.
Good catch.
Well, so how do we all feel?
I'd say if that's the only change we're looking at doing, we've done pretty good with that. And to send out all those letters and get this feedback, I'd, I'd say we, we did pretty good, and, uh, if it's a small change that we can make and we could fit it into the schedule, continue this to one more hearing.
I'm just not sure how we make that change, honestly, without...
Well, Mike, Mike is saying make it, have another hearing, so it wouldn't be just an administrative change, it would be a substantive change, requiring another hearing, and...
I, I guess my, my concern is, you know, I, I'm concerned that, you know, if, if Amendment Eight goes through, but Amendment Two doesn't, you know, we're gonna have a different playing field. I mean, I, I guess if Amendment Eight goes through and Amendment Two doesn't, then accessory dwelling units still require a special exception everywhere. Right?
Or CUP.
Or, well, right, conditional use permit. I'm just trying to think about the combination of, of outcomes from all of the amendments we're looking at, which is one of the challenges.
Now, I'm personally willing to hear feedback and potentially add the, another public hearing and a special exception. At the same time, I know that we went into this trying to make it a bit more permissive.
Right.
And, which is why we allowed a single-family attached, um, two-family without special exception, and, um, ADU without, um, by, 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 by right. But if others feel differently, and obviously, we heard some feedback to that regard.
I guess my question for Brian is, do you feel as strongly about requiring a special exception for everything that's different in the fraud from the single-family residential? Or is it just accessory dwelling units that's your concern? Or does, do, do the two-family dwellings concern you?
Good question.
Are, are you looking for them to, to mirror everything exactly, or are you just looking for the ability to have?
Well, I think it would be easier not, I mean, this is, I don't wanna make this about me and my property and the people around me, but, um, I think it would be easier for the general public, if it did mirror, um, in case, to your point, if one didn't pass and one passed, then what, what do you do? Like, if, you know, I think it would be, um, it would be easier. And I understand, to your point, John, that you wanna make, you, the goal was to make it more permissible in the outlying areas of Plymouth, like Fairgrounds Road. I get that. Um, but living there, you see more and more things are starting to creep up, which is fine, I, you know, whatever, but just to have that special exception to have a conver- like I said, have a conversation, um, about what's going on, and, you know, how this might impact you and your family, if you're doing this to your property. And like you said, like, you could check the boxes, and there's no way that they, it could be denied, but, you know, at least somebody could say, you know, open that conversation.
My, my only reticence is the full mirroring of the single-family residential, because we heard a lot of public feedback about the single-family attached being a desirable housing.
I know, I'm sorry I didn't get to that other, that other public meeting, but that's, that's why we have mul- multiple public hearings, right? So, everybody can have a chance to speak.
Mike?
From our discussions with the HOP grant meeting, which was the housing committee, we talked about a lot of alternatives on how to increase housing, and we realized the single-family zone, um, is more, I guess, neighborhood, um, but we talked about putting more than six units per building. And, and that seemed to put off more people than allowing up to four units in this overlay and two by right. Um, it seemed like a much easier swallow than thirty units or, or twelve per building. And I think that's where a lot of that thinking came, when we said, well, let's at least become more permissible in this overlay.
And I get that, I just think it's...
And I think what you brought up, the fact that someone could put a house on a very small ten thousand square foot lot, and then all of a sudden comes back six months later, oh, hey, by the way, I would have put an accessory dwelling unit in here. It needs the same, I think that, because it hasn't already gone through the planning board process for a site plan review, that that would need something to trigger the neighbors to come in and at least be able to give some input.
Well, the, the, right. The creation of the lot would have, that would be noticed, but, because as the, as the subdivision process, but not the accessory dwelling unit.
Correct. We have no...
And, and to Mike's point, I will say, like, um, there was a lot of compromise that went into this already, um, to arrive at this space, and from like our last public, um, not public hearing, but our last community meeting, um, earlier in the fall, um, we had, we heard a lot of input from people who were willing to see us pushed beyond this even. And we kind of realized that there would also be pushback from other members of the community that pushed beyond this. And I think that seemed like a good compromise.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do those people that were really pushing for more live on Fairgrounds Road?
I think it was a mix of people, I, I can't remember offhand who was...
I know, you brought it up.
I mean, they're Plymouth residents, I, I can't really recall them, yeah.
I see the anxiety and frustration in your faces that I've...
No, I, I...
I've been on that side of the table, and I...
It's, we're, we're just trying to find a solution. That's, it's not the, yeah.
And it's one thing to have the community outreach meetings, but until you put something on paper that says, black and white, this is what it's gonna be, this is what it's gonna be, we were just talking in general terms. And we found in this process, once you put it in black and white, all of a sudden, it looks a lot different than just general plans. And, um, and this is what we wanted, we wanted your input, we wanted everybody's input. That's why we're doing this, it's not just so we can listen amongst ourselves. So, I, I, I don't think there's any doubt in my mind where this board needs to go next.
I have mixed feelings about it, and, um, I think this needs to be totally understood, because if we take this to be voted on, and people don't understand it, it's just gonna go away, and it's gonna make things much more difficult. I, I don't think another hearing is a bad idea, but at this next hearing, do we reword this? Do we leave, how, how does that work?
I, I, I think the only change that I would envision, based upon this discussion, is having accessory dwelling unit by special exception.
So, with the...
From what I've heard from this conversation, um...
What about two-family? Would you also go by special exception?
Two-family, you have to have a big enough lot to accommodate those, you can't just have that ten thousand or, or whatever it is, quarter acre lot. So, that's, that's at least a known, and you go through, generally, you would be going into a subdivision, because there's no, uh, quarter acre lots in existence in that overlay now.
So, the next hearing, you have another group of people that come and say, well, I like the dimensional requirements, because I don't want the, which is what, so, what do you do then?
One second, I, I, I do wanna just point out, I think the fact that we're having like a half hour discussion about a special exception for accessory dwelling units, means we have a lot of consensus, in, in fact, in this room.
Mm-hmm.
That we're not arguing about all the bigger things.
Oh, exactly.
Um, we're arguing about something pretty small here, um, but it's understandable, like, wanting that public input and from your neighbors. So, I just wanted to point it out, I think, I, we have a lot of agreement here, um, in this room, despite like just this sticking point here, um...
I don't feel like we're arguing.
No, 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 I...
No, and it's not about us, it's about the public.
Just, just thinking about the perception, just in case anybody's like, well, it's a lot of contention, in fact, it's a lot of agreea- of contention. In fact, it's a lot of agreement, but we have this one issue we're talking about.
You should have been here eight months ago.
I guess overall, just the, trying to make it more simple so it will pass would be, in my mind, more of a mirror type thing. What's allowed in the single-family residential zone, you know, if you're going to default to that in the overlay, then that's what you use. I know it's not as simple as that for you guys, but...
My thinking is there's going to be another difference, there's going to be another difference anyway. Even if we make the single-family residential, or the accessory dwelling units and two-family by special exception in the fraud, we're still going to have the single-family attached in the fraud that's not allowed in this.
And there was a lot of support for that, a lot of support. I wouldn't want to take that out.
If there, if there's one small difference, does it matter if there are three small differences? Is that something you can live with?
I think it was another...
It's up to me.
Right, no, I mean...
I mean, it's, you know.
Can I say?
Go ahead, Mike.
The whole point of having these hearings is to hear from the people that are most affected. And if you go back and then you know there's another meeting, and then all of a sudden, there's fifteen more people saying, yeah, we're just getting word of this, we got the letter, but we didn't open it, and we're not happy with this at all, then we've done our job to notify, and now we really have to decide which direction we want to go. Because I don't think the answer is, oh, let's just let the voters, because it's really hard to understand this. And I applaud you, whoever else, that's showing up to take the time, because it's not easy. And there's a lot of catch-up to get to this point, to stand there and, and say your piece. So I definitely think one more meeting is not going to hurt. And if there are other problems, please, everybody show up, because it's not something that has to happen this year. We can put more time into it and do it another year. But at least we've started the process and to find out and gauge whether there's support or not. And...
So regarding the amendment eight, with accessory dwelling units...
If you could identify yourself, Matt.
I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, Matt Yen, thank you. Accessory dwelling units, I personally believe they should be permitted across the board in the town. When someone has to go to a special exception, that's just, I don't want to say just, but that's, it's a, it's the legal right of the, the person doing it by state statute. We already have criteria that outlines that. So the only thing we're putting people through to come in for a special exception, to my understanding, is so they can let her know what their feelings are. So whether you decide to knock on your neighbor's door and talk to him about your feelings, or come on public record and talk to him about your feelings, it doesn't change a darn thing. You can't stop them from doing it if it meets the criteria. But I don't, I'm not weighing on that either way. I think if it went to special exception, so be it. What I do think is that there's been some detraction tonight in using that the fraud is mirroring the SFR, because that was never the intent. There's no intention of the fraud to mirror anything about SSR except for the density and dimensional requirements. So I think this whole mirroring thing, we're sort of getting detract that, let's mirror this, because then we're changing the two-family dwelling, single-family exceeding, not to exceed for. It's all of a sudden start, starting to unwind a lot of things that were thought up of, engineered specifically for the fraud. So there's never been an intent to mirror the SFR whatsoever. It's just that the density and dimensional requirements determined in the SFR, proposed, was determined that they do fit well in the fraud too. So I think that to put forward that everything in the fraud discussed needs to now revert to special exception is a detractor in the permissibility of, you know, helping with housing to a moderate density. I don't want to say high density, but it's also, it would increase density. So those are my thoughts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike?
And part of the, part of the background that the HOP committee did was looking at how much it costs for a young family to buy a lot in Plymouth, and how, there's so many people that are working in Plymouth but can't find housing. And so part of our goal was to figure out how we can come up with more housing in Plymouth, and hopefully maybe, at the same time, maybe alleviate some of the higher prices and come down with some less expensive neighborhoods. And that was our goal, and this was one tool that we found that we thought could help. So that's why we made it a little bit more permissible, like Matt said. And that was our goal.
One last comment from me for now. The idea of putting this off for a year is always possible, and it's never good to rush things necessarily in planning. At the same time, the fact that we're just discussing whether we should have a special exception for an ADU, and broad consensus, it seems, about everything else, means I really, I wouldn't advise putting this one off. It seems like there's a lot of support for this from all the outreach we've done. And I wouldn't want to put this off for a year over this detail. I do want to get it worked out reasonably for everybody involved, and we've heard different opinions here about what, how this should happen. So I guess it comes down, let's...
Mr. Chairman, I make a comment.
Oh, yes, yeah, thank you.
So, no problem. It just, it sounds like, I'm hearing kind of two different things. And I just want to make sure that there's clarity in what the real issue is. If the real issue is the amendment to the amendment being confusing, then that's one thing. If it's wanting to mirror things about single-family, that's another. If the issue is just clarity, I think that is, you know, more easily, you know, that's something that we can talk about with the language. So the way it's written right now, and I didn't attend the last hearing, so I'm not sure, like, if the conversation was unclear, but use regulations. The following uses shall be permitted in the FRROD, and it lists them. Then it says, density and dimensional regulations, so separate category. Area dimensions shall be in accordance with section 3042 for single-family residential. So if that, if, if the board or the public feels that's unclear, then we can, we can talk about ways to amend the wording. But if the issue is the special exception for ADUs, I just want to make sure that the board is clear on, on what we need to do going into a third hearing, so that any, any language changes are, are kind of clearly reflecting what, what you want to see.
And for members of the public, this is Alexis, who is working with Barrett Planning Group, who have been helping us out with this entire process tremendously.
I should say my name.
And would be involved in any of the rewriting that would happen.
Brian, if you want any documents, I think everybody from the board has, and for everything we need, you're welcome to any of these.
Should be some at the front table, too.
I just wasn't, it looked like I was looking for something that we didn't have.
Can we just see where we want to go at this point? Personally, I feel like it's going to be different in uses from the single-family residential, and I'd be okay with keeping it the way it is, understanding some concerns about public input in the process. I would also be, if everybody else felt differently, be willing to obviously go to a second or third hearing about this.
I'm not sure I felt really strongly about requiring a special exception for two-families or accessories in the single-family to begin with, but I think, you know, we, isn't that what we put in as a, as a result of the discussion with Mr. Kent?
I think the only way we changed the ADU, I think, if I recall correctly.
I don't know. I guess I'm on the fence here. You know, I do... I want to be respectful of the...
I guess the one thing we have to realize is, if we do want to go to a third public hearing on this, we need to decide the language tonight. We can't wait till next time to decide, because we need that language now, so we can have a proper notice, if we want to go forward with that. And we've, we've heard feedback in both directions here this evening. And...
So if someone has a one-acre lot, they do not need a site plan review or a special exception to come in with a four-unit apartment house, or a four-unit, whatever we call those.
Single-family detached.
Single-family attached four-unit.
Which is different than an apartment house, because they all have their separate entrances, vertical units.
Are you aware of that, Brian?
Heard a lot dimensioned.
Yeah, if you have, is it a, is it a one acre that would be able to, to handle, in that overlay, would a one acre be able to handle a four?
I believe it would. Single-family attached up to four units.
It's like kind of townhouse style, basically.
Without a special exception.
Without a special exception, they just go in, get their permit, and they start building the four units.
Yeah.
And that's why...
Honestly, my, my issue was just to, you know, there was a discussion at the first public hearing, things were changed, and that's, the overlay is supposed to go under those. That's what, that's what the choices were, if you're looking at the overlay. That's how, you know, I guess that's where the confusion was.
I guess, yeah, so the confusion is, dimensionally, we follow the single-family residential. In terms of uses, it's kind of similar, but it's not a mirror.
With all the respect to everybody and their comments, I think that what we have, what we have here is what we were trying to accomplish from our housing meeting and all of the stuff that we have been through for the last eight or 10 months. But I think clarity, I think the clarity has got to be, I think you're right, Alexis, it's, that's where we need to go. There's got to be better clarity there, in that it is dimensional requirements, not the same thing as single-family residential. I think that, you're right, we need to focus in an area and go. But I understand what everyone's saying, and I get both sides, but we're running amok.
Can I ask a clarifying question there? In terms of clarity, are we, I mean, I read the language here, and it looks clear to me. So is it clarity in terms of our messaging to the public and education of the public as to what we're proposing, or is it clarity here in the language? To me, the language is pretty clear, for me at least.
I think it's both. And we've been working on this for 10 months, so we, and you understand it.
Yeah.
It's still cloudy to me, and I've been working on it for 10 months. So I, for the average person that's coming in and reading this, that dimensional requirement is not going to strike that key, that it's not going to be everything that's going to be covered. So I, I think it's in both areas. If there's any legal way you can make that more clear, then that would be wonderful.
Can I address that? So the notice that went out, and the notice that will go to voters describes this as saying, the Fairgrounds Road overlay district would preserve the underlying zoning while allowing property owners the option of using the overlay district standards as an alternative, which mirrors the dimensional requirements of the single-family residential zone, and allows single-family detached, single-family attached, two-family, and accessory dwelling units as permitted uses. I, I think it's clear, but it, it's, but it may not be as accessible as we would like it to be. But, you know, that's one of those things where zoning language is pretty specific, and it has to be. And it's not always, it's, it's hard to make it as, as understandable as we would like it to be.
So to your point, I think if we go forward with this language, perhaps a bit more kind of education from the planning board or the housing committee to clarify things for the public might be helpful in the interim between now and town meeting.
I, I, I think that's, I definitely think that would be helpful.
So your, your thought is to go forward as, as proposed, not, not change the language? I'm not trying, it sounded like that's what you were getting at.
I'm on the fence about it, and I...
I think the other thing, you know, just looking at these, when you go back to the dimensional requirements in the single-family residential area, and I could be reading this wrong, but you could put a four-unit on a 25,000 square foot lot, 10,000 for a single-family, 5,000 for each additional unit, correct? So that's a little over a half acre.
When you say four-unit, you mean four-unit, single, single-family attached, as opposed to multifamily?
Yes, yeah, yes, yes. Which, again, so a developer with 1.2 acre, 1.2 acres could divide that in two, in theory, and put a four and a four next to each other, so you have eight units on 1.2 acre lots. And as someone who owns property in the agricultural zone, there may be a reason why you own property in the agricultural zone, because you like less units next to you. And so if you're currently in that zone, like this gentleman, you may be thinking like, well, maybe, you know, again, maybe I bought here because I knew those things weren't an option. So I think, you know, all of us have good thoughts. I think it's most interesting to me, though, to hear from the people who specifically live in that area, because it's them that it's going to impact. It's not going to currently impact me because of where I live. So I just think it's, you know, I think we should weigh their voices maybe a little bit heavier.
No, I, I, I don't know that we haven't been weighing those voices.
No, I'm not saying we haven't.
And I, and in terms of the proposed density, I haven't really heard any pushback. And if I did, I would, you know, that would give me pause. But I haven't really heard that. I've heard some other pushback, but like, that hasn't been part of it. And we've been doing a lot of outreach with the HOP committee and the planning board for the past year. And...
We kept getting the same people, for the most part.
Exactly.
And I think if we were to knock on 10 people's door in that overlay area, you would get 10 people that probably have never heard of what we're trying to do. 10 out of 10. What's that?
I said, that's Ryan.
Brian, what do you think? 10 out of 10? Probably had no clue what's going on?
Yeah, I mean...
Maybe one person. You read the letter. But I think it's not going to hurt to go to one more. And if the people that were at this meeting, maybe one or two people saw this meeting online, and then they talked to their neighbors, and then it grows to not four or five, but 10 or 15, 20, that's an indication that maybe we haven't done our homework quite the way we thought we did. And I think, I would make a motion that we go to another hearing, continue this with just, for now, one small change, which would be to special exception, to take an existing home and make an ADU. I'll second it.
Wait, before, just to clarify what we're talking about. To take an existing home and make an ADU, are you changing the ag zone zoning, or are you changing the fraud? Because we're talking about potentially new development using the dimensional requirements of the fraud and not necessarily an existing home.
So my understanding is, throughout the entire town, we said that in ADU, you have to come here, just like someone on Bell Road a few months ago. And then my understanding is, when we made that change, you need to go to a special exception. That was townwide, as I understood it.
Not within here.
It's only, it's only in the single-family residential.
So I would be in favor of townwide, not just the overlay in the single-family zone. That's what I thought we were, we were doing. That's what I thought we were, we were doing.
So this is going to start putting multiple amendments up for a third public hearing and running us into a really tight timeline and I understand your concern. I'm not trying to like diminish your concern, I'm just thinking about, because that would require yet another amendment to.
One more?
At least.
It would require an amendment to the amendment two.
To the second amendment, I think it is.
Because that's, that's the way I understood it and I wasn't thinking it through. Because there is so many different angles that we never thought of when we're doing this and that's why we have public hearings to flush it out.
I mean, it, it seems like we've done a lot of diligence here in sending out paper notices and doing outreach in various forms for the past year. And we heard from our master plan five years ago that this was also, not with all these details worked out, obviously, a potential area to have more dense residential development that, I mean, it seems like we have done our homework. We've done a lot of work in the past year to get feedback and we've gotten more feedback with this process and the help of Barrett Planning than we can normally do in a year. And I think, I feel personally fairly comfortable with what we're proposing here.
I have not been part of the housing committee, but I appreciate the time that people have put into it. You know, we have this grant because I think statewide, we've acknowledged that there's a shortage of affordable housing options and you know, the charge was to come up with some proposed changes to make those options more affordable for people who want to be in Plymouth. We, we can't do that without making changes and, you know, changes are going to affect somebody somewhere. You know, I think the consensus of, of the board was that this is an area that has water and sewer. It could support more density. There, there are very few other areas of town that meet those criteria and I, and I think the committee was astute in proposing this change. I'm, I'm inclined, it, it may not be perfect, but I'm inclined to move forward with it as is. Only in the sake of allowing voters the opportunity to kind of cast their vote for this or, or against this. I, I think it's really a well thought out option and it, it may not suit everyone's needs, but I don't think it's going to. You know, I think when you, there, you know, it's only going to affect new developments, subdivisions of land initially. And, and, but it gives developers two options. They can either go with the underlying ag zone or they can use the dimensional requirements of the single family for, for proposals in that zone. And I think it's actually a, an innovative and thoughtful way of creating affordable opportunity for people.
So I do believe we still have a motion on the table. I have not heard a second.
We have heard a second.
Yeah, I think Neil's.
Who seconded it?
Neil.
Oh, Neil, you seconded it. And I missed that, sorry.
Yeah.
So the motion was to add by special exception to accessory dwelling unit in 17 or on, on page 17?
Yes, and then to have a third public hearing. Any further discussion about that motion?
Can I ask a question? So how does that affect that article? That numbered the second amendment, how does that affect that?
It's unrelated.
It doesn't.
We'll, we'll have to deal with that later.
But we will have to deal with it because of this.
We're only dealing with Article 8 right now, right? So I mean.
The uses of the overlay are the uses listed right here under use regulations and the, the, those uses are not listed in the second.
Okay, so this will have nothing to do with what we're doing there.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question just based on, I just want to make sure that the motion is covering what Mike said. Mike, when you said something about thinking that something was townwide, what, what did you mean? Was that for the ADUs?
Yes, so for right now, we're talking about, because I think Brian, you'd be interested in having a special exception, whether it's in the overlay or whether it's just, if the overlay never happened, you'd still want it in your zone.
Ag zone.
Would you want it just in the ag zone anywhere? And that's what, I, I would want that too. But for this, for the purpose of this, it's just for the overlay which would be required and then I would, I would suggest we do it in all zones.
When, when we get to dealing with amendment two.
Right.
But your motion was just for the overlay.
For the overlay.
Okay. So you think it's a special exception in all, in all zones?
Well, that, that, we can't really, that's a different amendment, so we'll deal with that when we get there.
Just like it is now, it's, or it's.
It's conditional use.
Conditional use now, whereas the, the neighbors would have a chance to give input, we.
We'll, we'll get to that in a, in a little bit later. So Heather, any further discussion about this motion?
Can I ask Jessica a question?
Alexis.
Alexis. Alexis, do you have any, we talked a little bit about this, are there concerns at all from your perspective if two passes and eight doesn't or vice versa?
With regard to the, the ADU conversation, no, I'm, I'm sorry, you're saying if eight passes and two doesn't?
Correct.
You said, so I, I guess the only potential would then, would be, wouldn't then amendment eight when it's saying it matches the, the, the zoning in the single family residential zone, then it's still just using the current density that's in the single family residential if, if two doesn't pass. So I guess the only change would be, at least, at least, there'd still be more uses allowed.
And I don't think we're using the word mirror. I think we're just using where it says accessory dwelling unit by special, by special exception.
Right, I guess, yeah, I, I guess in, in retrospect, if you really cared about keeping that density, it probably you know, outright just state what the density would be rather than making it contingent on single family, which is a separate amendment. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I will say there was a lot of support from the planning board and the housing committee in the past year, and we can obviously change our minds about this, for making ADUs by right across the board.
In all zones.
In all zones. And by returning the, rescinding that in the special, in the single family residential, as we talked about in our last public hearing, that was a kind of concession back to putting that public process back into it again, which we had mostly had a pretty good consensus. We didn't like want to go there. Anyhow.
Yeah, and that, that's just why I wanted to ask, to make sure I understood what Mike was saying.
And we'll, and we'll get to amendment two in a little bit. Hopefully a little bit. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Nay? Abstentions? Okay, so it looks like we'll, we will, the motion passes and we will change the language, accessory dwelling unit by special exception and put this to another public hearing on February 1st.
So did you vote opposed or in favor or abstained?
Sorry. I think it was just Phil and I who voted. Hey, thank you all for all your feedback. And maybe we'll see you again on the first.
On this topic. So it, it is possible, we may not, I mean, we may, we don't have to rehear each amendment on the first.
No, 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 only, only if we make a change. I, I wouldn't want to go.
I mean, you still could.
If we decide that the other seven are good, we might move them to voters tonight.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
In theory, we could, but I think the goal for the evening was to push most of them towards, yeah.
Technically, you only need one.
Okay.
Yeah. So amendment seven. Article three, section 304 slash article five. Amend section 304 and article five to remove the current open space residential district requirements and replace with a reference to a new set of open space residential district standards that will be housed in the Plymouth subdivision regulations. In section 304, remove the reference to cluster residential development, add footnotes to the table of uses and add area dimensions to refer to Plymouth subdivision regulations and create a new definition for open space residential district according to article two. So the long and short of this one is currently open space residential development. Sometimes it's called cluster development and it's confusing in our current ordinance, which is another amendment. Is in our zoning ordinance and we've gotten lots of feedback professionally in the state saying it's better placed in our subdivision regulations. And so we'd be moving those regulations from the zoning ordinance to the subdivision regulations. And so for this change, all there would really be is taking out the open space residential district requirements and just placing a note that you're going to find them in the subdivision regulations instead. And that's still up to then this board to adopt. It could be the same, although we also have a proposal for a new set of open space residential regulations that would go into the, so in other words, this is about moving those regulations. In the process of moving them and amending our subdivision regulations, we still have the opportunity to determine what those regulations look like. This, this is more of a kind of question of do we want to move them? As per a lot of feedback we've heard from various individuals in the state. Yes, Mike.
So I read this pretty quick and there was something about the height of the buildings and how many stories. Where was that?
Before we get too far, Mike. I do want to devote a good amount of time to discussing that draft. That draft has no binding power on what we decide tonight.
Okay.
If we wanted to, we can just take our current regulations and cut and paste them from one document to the other. But we decided it might be good to refresh them and we can talk about what that looks like. And we might not end up probably with exactly what that says. So, but that we don't have to decide tonight.
Okay, good.
Tonight is simply about, do we take them out of here and put them in here instead? And that's what we're looking at. What they look, actually look like in detail, the wording, is another conversation. Before we go down that path, which is a big conversation. Are there any, any comments from members of the public about this? Any comments from the board? Have a motion.
Anybody online?
Just Alexis.
Okay. I, I would move that we present our amendment seven as written to the legislative body at town meeting, March 2024.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion is approved. So amendment number six, article three, section 304.2 and article four, section 401.1. Amendment, amend these sections to consolidate commercial colocation section and multiple buildings on a single lot section into a new section 401.1, which would allow more than one principal structure on a lot subject to site plan review where applicable and provided relevant life, safety, fire and other requirements are met. Multiple single family or two-family dwellings on a lot would be allowed by conditional use permit. Also removes more than one main structure from section 304 table of uses. The short version of this is we currently allow in our zoning ordinance, commercial colocation. So if you have one commercial lot, you can put more than one commercial structure on that lot and this would extend that to residential colocation. Are there any comments or questions from the public? From the board? Okay. Motion?
I would move that we present this to the legislative body at town meeting, March 2024.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion is approved. Zoning amendment number five. Article four, section 416. Amend the accessory dwelling unit requirements by converting them from permitted by conditional use permit to permitted in all zones which allow single family dwellings aside from SFR, where they will be permitted by special exception. Update the section, update the reference in section 304 accordingly. This removes the need for planning board approval and for a public hearing in most cases. Also remove inaccurate language referencing state statutes and simplify the purpose statement section and change the required parking spaces to a minimum of one for an accessory dwelling unit in addition to the spaces required for a single family home. So in other words, according to this, we already talked about some of the, the use issues. Our current zoning ordinance says that accessory dwelling units by default meet, help meet our requirements for workforce housing, which they don't by default. In many cases, they probably do, but we can't really assume that, so we're removing that, which is not legally correct. And, yeah, and reducing the minimum required parking spaces for an ADU to one space for the ADU plus whatever is required for a single family home. Is there any public comment here? Yes.
I just wanted to comment publicly that I'm in support of this amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Okay. Members of the board?
I guess I have a question about, do we need to reword section two that says accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted and by special exception in the single family residential to include and the Fairgrounds Road Overlay if approved? Because that's a conditional, right? Alexis, do you want to weigh in on that? Or, or does the, does the approval of eight overwrite this?
I, I am. We're on five, so, so I think what, what is being asked is should this also state that it's by special exception in the Fairgrounds Road Overlay District? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah. Because we're, we're specifically calling it out that a special exception, but it's by special exception in the single family residential. We just voted to amend the Fairgrounds Road Overlay to, to allow it by special exception as well. So we have, which, which comes first? Or, or is this an administrative change that if eight is approved, we can include it in the language of five, once it's approved? Or, or do we have to put something in that says, and if article eight is approved, we'll, we'll also include the Fairgrounds Road Overlay District?
Can I make a suggestion? What if it just says accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted by special exception in all zoning districts that permit single family dwellings and subject to the following?
We had a lot of discussions this year about removing the conditional use permit requirements, which is similar to a special exception, it's a different board, from the ADU requirements. And that came from the planning board, it came from the housing committee and I'm not certain I'm prepared to rethink that at this late stage in the game. After a year of discussion of changing that. I was willing to go along with that in a single family because of the density there, but to change. but to change that everywhere, when it seemed like we had a broad consensus and not much public pushback about this, I don't know why we wouldn't make that change.
And I would say at the second community meeting, that there was strong consensus for, for the ADUs being by right.
I have a question. The, I'm looking at the actual language of the amendment here. Section two provisions is the only place I think this is actually mentioned. An accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted by special exception in single family residential and permitted in all other zoning districts and permitted in single family dwellings and subject to the following. Could this be a, a administrative change, just to strike part of a sentence there and to say an accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted in all zoning districts? I guess by, I guess is the issue. Because I mean, if you need a special exception or if it's permitted by right, is dealt with in our use table anyway. And do we even need that language clarifying this in this section as well? Since it's already in the use table?
Oh, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Could we just like, could we just strike this from there as an administrative change and just deal with it in the use table in amendment two?
I like that.
Your right.
I think that's, Joseph, that would be the administrative change, right? That wouldn't be a real substantive change.
So you're saying section two provisions, an accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted by special exceptions?
That section, just take out.
Just, or have say, section two provisions.
That's already dealt with in the.
Accessory dwelling units are subject to the following.
Yeah. And, and because the special exception or not is already in the use table anyway.
And then fight the battle wherever else.
Yeah.
That sounds good.
As long as it's, as long as the allowable use is permitted in a different section, like I think anytime we can remove redundancy, it makes it more clear as to where you find.
And it makes us less likely to screw it up the next time we change a change.
Yeah. I'm, I'm in favor of that. Because we might be in the agri, commercial zone and there's a single family home and do we really care?
So Joseph, that, that's, that would be an administrative change, right?
Well, it's already, the substantial.
I don't think it is, though.
You don't think that's an administrative change?
I don't know.
It's a good point, it's a good question. I mean, the, so the change, how do you think about where that use is changing? Is it changing because we're changing the table of uses or is it changing because we're changing this?
It's redundant to the table of uses.
It is redundant, yeah.
It's redundant. It's already in the table of uses.
And, and we may have to deal with the question of where it's allowed.
In amendment two.
But if we don't have to do it in two places, it will create clarity for voters.
Alternatively, we could, we're renoticing a hearing anyway.
Yeah.
Even if it's, whether it's administrative or not, we could renotice it.
Yeah, fine.
That's the other option.
Yeah.
But you could take that out and renotice, taking that out. I mean, that's another option if you wanted to.
Can I make that change?
Go ahead, maybe you want to make a motion?
I will mo, I will move that we change the language on page twelve under accessory dwelling units. So amendment five, section two shall read provisions, period, accessory dwelling units are subject to the following.
And this is probably administrative, but. We forgot a word there.
And I would also include in that motion, insert the word one in letter, section two, letter H, so that it reads the ADU shall have at least one parking space allotted to it.
I think that is really administrative, but I think that's a typo there, but.
But if we're making the change, let's make the change and renotice it.
Sounds good.
Is that a second?
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. This one going to a second public hearing with those changes.
Alexis is on the phone with somebody, so I'm a little nervous now.
I haven't talked to the boss.
Yeah, yes. Hi.
Hello.
I just wanted to ask, so for everybody, if I may, again, from bear planning, yeah, I just wanted to confirm with Judy, who's quite sick, but about, about the language, what she had recommended, if, if you do keep that language about an accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted by special exception in single family residential and permitted in all other zoning districts, in theory, if you put in and the fraud now, and then amendment eight didn't pass, you would just have a weird extraneous reference to something that's not in your bylaw until next town meeting.
Is there any reason not to just take it out since it's redundant to the use table anyway?
But the fraud isn't in the use table, but I guess it doesn't.
But it's already defined there instead.
Yeah, yeah.
So it seems redundant, so I think we could just take it out?
We just made a motion and approved the motion to.
Okay, sorry.
Remove the, the language that deals with where it's accessible from the ADU things because it's, where you can have an ADU is going to be dealt with in amendment two.
Okay.
Or for the fraud amendment eight. So in both cases, it's redundant, so.
Awesome. All right, thanks.
Simplify and add lightness.
All right. Amendment number four, article four, section four eleven, amend parking requirement table to eliminate unused uses, amend the multifamily dwelling, accessory dwelling unit parking requirements, adjust the setback requirements between parking facilities and property lines, update qualitative requirements including requiring a buffer provision for new parking in the side yard, delete ambiguous wording in section four eleven point four and clarify throughout amendment, amend section four eleven point four to apply to non-residential uses only. So a lot of this was just kind of clarifying of kind of messy language in places. There was, I think it's in a couple of places where we're dealing with the 125% issue getting clarified. And then there's the side, side parking, which is dealt with in the dimensional requirements as the side setback, I believe, and dealt with here just in terms of clarifying beyond numbers some of those issues, including having a buffer for side parking. It's my understanding of this amendment. So there's a bunch of parking issues that need to be clarified. A lot of it's kind of not particularly impactful, some of it's a bit more impactful. The, the most controversial part of that parking section we removed, which was the front parking issue at our last public hearing. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the board? Any motions from the board?
I'll move that we present amendment four as written to the voters, town meeting, March 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes. All right. Article three, section, okay, this is amendment number three. Article three, section three oh four, change the dimensional standard table to reduce the minimum required road frontage for a lot in SFR and MFR, single family, multifamily residential, where offsite sewer is present from 100 feet to 75 feet and reduce minimum setbacks in those zones, which would allow the option of using front setbacks based on the average of surrounding residential lots within 300 feet, but not less than five feet or 10 feet respectively, and add a separate setback table for uncovered parking spaces and reduce the minimum parking setbacks in some districts and allow parking as close as five feet by special exception. Change minimum lot sizes to a consistent unit of measure and replace the lot area per multi-unit building table with a consistent requirement for additional square footage per unit over one differentiated by district where offsite water and sewer is available. Reduce minimum lot size in SFR to 10,000 square feet and MFR to 7,500 square feet. Remove dimensional reference to cluster residential development and add footnote to refer to the Plymouth subdivision regulations. Simplify a lot size, lot size requirements by replacing one acre with 40,000 square feet and half an acre with 20,000 square feet in all cases aside from lots served by onsite well and septic systems. And that is a mouthful. And I can certainly clarify all of this and why we're doing it if anybody would like, although for the sake of expediency, if nobody requests that, I will not. Are there any questions or comments from the public about this amendment? All right.
I move that we recommend this amendment.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion is approved. I didn't go through all those explanations. All right. Amendment number two, article three, section three oh four, amend use table by updating names of certain uses for clarity, change multifamily dwellings not exceeding six units from a special exception to a permitted use within the multifamily residential zoning district, allow single family attached dwellings up to four units as a permitted use in MFR, ACI and VC and by special exception in HC and ICD districts, and amend the provisions referencing parking for more than, less than, or equal to 125% of the minimum parking requirements to eliminate the internal conflict, remove cluster residential development and replace with open space residential development. Two words for the same thing that just aren't consistent in our zoning ordinance currently. Add footnotes to the table of uses to refer to the Plymouth subdivision regulations for regulations that apply in open space residential development. Are there any comments from the public about this amendment, which is basically about, it's a table of uses? And some of these are changes of uses and what's permitted and by what special exception and so forth. Others are changing of the words in that table to allow for some of the changes of definitions in amendment one. Any comments from the board here?
So David Kent mentioned about other zones like the, maybe he didn't mention the multifamily, but if you have four units and you're allowed up to six and you're permitted to have an accessory dwelling unit, could two of those units that already have, get your six?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you?
So let's say we're allowing up to six units permitted.
In the multifamily residential?
Yes.
Because it's a multifamily district already.
Yes. So if you've got four units and they do two accessory dwelling, that gets you to the six, which would be allowed.
I believe the accessory dwelling units are for single family homes. Is that correct? Is that the entire zoning ordinance?
I believe so.
But if you have four that are, what do you call those?
Single family attached?
So it's another thing to think about.
I believe in amendment six, five? Five.
Four doesn't equal six.
Delete the.
Yeah. Accessory dwelling unit A, only one ADU shall be permitted on a lot that has an existing single family dwelling and no other accessory dwelling.
No other. So I guess.
And, and, and single family only, not multifamily.
And I think it's even a single family detached, is it in here?
It, it doesn't say that.
Doesn't, okay.
I, I mean, perhaps it could. So that's, so right now it says it's a residential living unit that is within, attached to or detached from a single family dwelling.
Because I would think their neighbors would want to know what's going on, on that law.
In accordance with our New Hampshire RSA, blah, 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 the purpose of this ordinance is to expand the mix of affordable housing opportunities in town by permitting the creation of secondary dwelling residences as an accessory to use to existing, existing single family detached dwellings.
Yeah, you're right. Apologies.
So it is actually the single family detached.
Detached, okay. So I guess the only thing I would probably like to see changed is accessory dwelling unit on the ag zone going from permitted to special exception. I'm not 100% convinced that that has to happen, but I think it's, I think it's probably kind of smart because in the ag zone, we have some half acre lots where there's, the houses are pretty close together and next thing you know, garages start popping up with homes or I just think that the neighbors should have at least noticed that it's happening.
So this is a very similar discussion to the one we had previously. And I would just point out from my own perspective here, being in favor of them being a permitted use, that we had a lot of discussions this year about whether or not, and the planning board has been talking about this and kind of like, in conjunction with some of the hearings that we've had for accessory dwelling units, and obviously for the special exception, we put it before the zoning board instead. But we, we've been talking about whether this, should this be a permitted use or a, need that extra layer of process for an applicant? And it seemed like throughout the year, the housing committee and the planning board have been pushing for this as a permitted use and, which is why, coming into our first public hearing, it was a permitted use across the board. And it seemed like there was a lot of traction for that with very little pushback from our various forms of community engagement. So we've made the change in single family residential, we proposed a change now for the overlay where there's tighter lots. And beyond that, personally, I prefer to keep it as permitted. My, my, my.
Can I ask a question? My understanding, if I, if I recall correctly, conditional use permits do not require that we notify a butters, do they?
They, they do as, as currently. Yep, they do.
Okay. So we actually have to do certified mail to a butters when we do it? Okay, all right. So that, the, the special, I was thinking originally that conditional use permits were simply administrative by us, but, so it's really from the applicant's perspective, the only thing that changes going from a conditional use permit to a special exception is the board to which you are appealing.
Yes.
And the ZBA meets once a month and we meet twice a month.
Although we only have a business meeting once a month.
So it is, it's, it's, I mean, conditional use permit has criteria, special exception has criteria. It, it really is, you know, you know, of course of a different color.
Versus permitted, which.
Right.
Just drops some of the barriers to.
I understand the value in, in allowing them my permit. I, I think we've all been somewhat uncomfortable with the concept of, of accessory dwelling units and we've seen several of them over the past few years. And I, I think one of the things that came up in discussion was that we had handled several accessory dwelling units by conditional use permit and never once did we have an a butter come in.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's totally true, but it was never necessarily a serious issue.
I'm not sure that we did. Like, maybe.
Well, regardless.
I don't see why we can't try it the way we have it. And next year, if we have people complaining.
If we move forward as it is, people can opt to not, oh, I mean, there are lots of things that change in this, I guess.
We can look at it again next year if we need to.
True.
It's harder to take something away than to.
Make it easier.
I do think, though, one of the things you said, Mike, if I'm reading this correctly, in the ag zone, to do this, you would need virtually an acre, you need 42,500 square feet if you have water and sewer and you would need.
On the law, if you have your own private.
No, that's with municipal. And then if you have your own private, you need over an acre, you need 51,060 feet.
If you have one or two, you could drop down to a half acre in the ag zone. So if you have. So if you had municipal water or municipal sewer.
Not, am I reading this correctly? Not on the new use, because I have.
I believe for an ADU, if, which has its own size requirements, maximums, it's not considered a separate dwelling unit, in the sense of needing additional acreage.
So that's, that is the difference between the two-family and the ADU. So the two-family requires the extra lot size, but ADUs.
Are limited in size, in total size.
But they limit the size of the unit. So that's the difference between those two.
And there's nothing that says ADUs are prohibited on non-conforming lots. So while the area table that we're proposing to adopt applies to creation of new lots, ADUs can go into any existing lot regardless of size. You could, you could have non-conforming, you could have quarter-acre lots out there in the, in the ag zone.
Gotcha.
That are existing. You wouldn't be able to create new ones, but you could have existing quarter-acre lots that are historic, that somebody could put an ADU on.
Gotcha.
Any other thoughts on this issue? By keeping it as is or subjecting this to further amendments as well?
I do want to clarify what Mark said. If you do have one or two or both, you can go in the ag zone to a half acre lot size, correct?
Currently, or under the proposed?
Currently, and with the change.
Well, this is slightly different from the ADU issue.
Correct. I just wanted, because Mark asked the question, I just want to make sure.
You're talking about like a two-family house?
No, single-family in the ag zone. Currently, if you have one or both, you can go to a half acre, and with any changes that we're going to, it's still half acre.
So the, the current, what we have in this, this draft amendment is 40,000 as the, as the minimum lot size?
Yeah, I don't see that in.
The current zone is one acre, but you can go down to half acre with a cluster development.
With cluster.
Correct. That's my understanding.
But not with water or sewer.
So right now, before we vote on this change, you could go to a half acre in the ag zone with water or sewer or both?
Only as part of a cluster subdivision where you're setting aside additional open space, or open space development. I don't think that's in there now. It's going to be up to current zoning.
I'm trying to look through the dimensional charts here. Ag zone, 40,000.
You have to meet lot loading if you don't have sewer. Right. But if you don't have to worry about a well.
But the minimum, I think the minimum lots, I don't think there's anything in our current zoning that allows you to go to half an acre in an ag zone.
Yeah.
I don't recall that. Is that our current zoning?
Question? Say the one acre lot.
Yeah, I'm pulling up the zoning now, but it's a, so, yep, the, in the ag zone, there's a, so you have a, this is probably where it, where it comes from confusion, so that it says, minimum lot size for property, and this is, we no longer have the water and sewer tier of lot size in the current zoning, that is in the proposed zoning. But if you have municipal sewage or private sewage system designed in accordance with state standards, it's listed in a current zoning as one acre slash point five acre, and that point five acre has asterix, which says, one acre is required unless a cluster residential development is used, in which case the lot size shall be calculated on half acre.
Thank you, Joseph. Got to follow the asterix.
And that's current.
This is in the, yeah, in the most recent zoning.
Now, actually, you can go a little bit less.
It'll be 40 rather than 43.
You can need the extra.
No, we determined that.
Changed it.
We changed it to 43,500.
Only if you need onsite both.
Right, right, right.
Otherwise, you can go to 40.
Okay. That's right.
All right.
Want a motion?
If, are we there? We're currently discussing, if you want to make a motion, I mean, I can't stop you, of course.
I'll make a motion. We recommend passing Amendment Two.
As written.
As written.
Okay.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? Okay, the motion passes.
Mike, I've been going for 16 hours.
Amendment number one. We've completed the countdown. Article Two, definitions. Create a new definition for dwelling attached single-family. Amend the definition for dwelling multiple unit to dwelling multifamily, describing a building to be occupied by between three and six units. So there are a few changes of definition here, and an addition of a definition. If the single-family attached. Any comments or questions about this amendment from the public? From the board?
I will move that we put Amendment One to voters as written.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion passes. So I guess we have two going to, two amendments going to another hearing, correct? Which is Amendment Eight and Amendment Five.
That hearing would be at the planning board's regularly scheduled next work session meeting, February 1st, 6:30 here at town.
Can I, can I recommend that we send the language out to the town attorney now, so that we get any feedback back before then? And we will promise not to change it at the next hearing.
Well, really, we cannot.
Because I, I don't think, there may not be time to get a review between April 1st, or February 1st and February 10th.
Yeah, so, yeah, good point.
That's, I mean, that's up to you to deal with, but I, I think that we can commit to.
Yeah.
You know, if he approves the language as written, we can either approve to go forward or not.
We can amend the language again, so, like, there's no time.
Right, yeah, there's no time for a hearing, so let's, let's go to.
That's my thought as well.
All right, so it is 8:34, and I will close the public hearing. Thank you all very much for your comments. Is there any unfinished other business from board members or planning staff?
None on my end, no.
All right. Are there any further public comments about anything else?
Just one.
Just a brief public comment. There's a new Facebook group out there, Concern Taxpayers of Plymouth. It just started today. I suggest everyone join, comment, subscribe, check it out. It is there for every, the community's gathering socially.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That does remind me, actually, I do have a note, I suppose, that I, that I might give a plug for our other land use board. The zoning board of adjustment has several openings for alternate members and an opening for a full member. We're going to put out a, you know, a message on it. This was discussed this past Tuesday at their meeting. We're going to put out a message in the, you know, the newsletter and other places, but they are looking for, for people interested in volunteering. It's first Tuesday of the month, they typically meet. Happy to discuss with anyone who has questions or interest in that.
Are there any planning board members that currently serve on the ZBA?
Peter Julia is, is on the ZBA.
So that means you can only have one member who serves on two boards, so there, that means if Peter's serving on both, you can't have, yeah, you can have, you can't have more than one member of any committee serving on another committee that's in the RSAs.
That includes alternates.
But it's a, they only, you know, they only meet when there's business for them to hear, so they do meet less frequently than this board.
Although we're agreeing, if, if some of these amendments pass, there might get more special exceptions coming their way.
Yeah, we're trying to generate some business for them.
All right, I entertain a motion at this point.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a wonderful night. Oh, I didn't give you.
Aye.
Aye.